We are back here in open session. Hello to everybody and we're going to dive right in.
Let me do something first.
Oh, Harvey says let him do something first.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the community for a moment of silence based upon the passing of one of our students, Cameron W. Hardy, a Senior Communication Studies major from Sparta, New Jersey. Let's have a moment of silence. I'd also ask for another moment of silence for those who passed in the Pearl Harbor attack of 75 years ago. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thanks, Dr. Kesselman. So, we are going to move right into a very happy occurrence and that is oath of office for our newest, our newly-elected Board of Trustees member who is also a Stockton graduate. Perhaps after we give you the oath, you can just say a few things if you're comfortable. We'll be over there. Nalida Valentin.
Can I say a couple of words?
Oh, Harvey would like to say a few things first.
I want to say a couple of words about Nalida.
Good.
I had the pleasure way back early in my career when I was the Director of the EOF Program to oversee the admissions of students and I remember Nalida extraordinarily well. In fact, she almost looks identical to what she did back in 1982 as a member of the summer program. And that was the first summer program that we had moved from the apartments to the dormitories, which was then housing, too. And we're very concerned about whether it would work as well as it did when it was in the apartments. And it was clear from the very first time that I met her that she was a student leader and she helped to navigate that new program through that and set a standard of excellence that, to this day, the EOF Program consistently does. Nellie, and I can call her still Nellie. Nellie, she came in '82. She graduated with honors in 1986. She then went on to get her Master's Degree in Political Science from the Eagleton Institute and graduated honors there and she also is an adjunct instructor for Rutgers-Newark and we will obviously recruit her to do it down here rather than, no, I'm just kidding. She brings a unique perspective as an alum. She has terrific expertise in grants, community service. At one point in her career, she was in charge of the Office of Hispanic Affairs for the State of New Jersey. She's been involved in social and economic development initiatives and she has, now currently is in a leadership position, I think she's Vice President of Princeton Area Community Foundation. She also worked at NHIT's Innovation Institute and in Newark, which is where she's originally from, Workforce Investment Board. She lives now in Trenton and I can say, again, I've had the distinct pleasure of knowing thousands and thousands and thousands of students who've come to Stockton and she is certainly among the best and the brightest that we've ever had. So, it is with great deal of pleasure that we are able to now appoint her as a member of our Board of Trustees, Ms. Nalida Valentin.
All right, follow me. This is such a big pleasure to do this, so I'm going to do this slowly. I learned that the hard way, that I can't do many sentences at once. And it's pretty simple, but meaningful. "I, Nalida Valentin..."
"I, Nalida Valentin..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and that I will bear true faith..."
"...and that I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and to the governments established in the United States..."
"...and to the governments established in the United States..."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...so help me God."
"...so help me God."
That's it? Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for saying yes.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am so delighted to have an opportunity to serve as a trustee here at Stockton University. I was thinking on the way down, I actually came from Somerset today. I had to attend the Center for Nonprofits Conference and I kind of assured them that I'd stay half a day so that I can get down to Stockton an hour and a half later down through the Parkway. And it was hearkening back to the days in which I would take that commute as little as possible back to my hometown in Newark. And it seemed awfully long at that time, but there were very, very good memories. And if I can say one thing as I thought along that drive down the Parkway, I was thinking about the things that really made Stockton a very special place for me. As an EOF student and Dr. Kesselman was very gracious in his words, Stockton really opened up a world of opportunities for me. Education was one of those things that, you know, was, in essence, for me personally, a ticket really towards a better life and a better career pathway. And so, I'll never forget, you know, how open and how gracious the Stockton community was. This became my home. I actually lived on campus the four years that I was here. I remember there was a young woman named Lynn who helped me how to learn how to drive stick shift when I was a student. Lynn, Lynn Kesselman. And I learned many lessons from the faculty and the adults that, you know, really are trustees of the students. And for those that are students here, I hope that you all realize what a great gift it is to have an opportunity to go to college. For me, it was EOF and subsequently the four years that I spent here and was able to actually get a Masters and do all the wonderful things that I've had an opportunity to do and I hope that I have an opportunity to do for you in the time that I'm of service. So, thank you so much and it's an honor.
Oh, that's, I think that reminds us why we're all here and I feel the same way about my time at Stockton and I know Ray also speaks very eloquently and it's nice to have another alum on the board. And nice to see you all. Reporter of the Chair is next. I don't have anything to report except to say that I'm going to pass it over to the President's Report at this time.
And my report, today we have the pleasure and honor to appoint a Board of, Board Member to the Stockton Aviation Research Technology Park. I think if you saw her credentials, Sidney Sykes might be the most impressive students with whom I've ever come in contact. She has her BS in, she's enrolled in the BS in Sustainability with an Energy Concentration. She has a 3.8 GPA in that. She's got a BS in Applied Physics and a three, and Yisoc is here, so he should be smiling when I say this, 3.8 GPA, 3.8 GPA in that and a minor in Mathematics, so she has a very soft academic load while at Stockton. So, we're really pleased that she has agreed to serve in the capacity as the Student Board of Director members of the Stockton Aviation Research Technology Park. And for those who are wondering, how is that coming along? It actually is coming along finally. There is dirt being moved and it, this is going to become a reality. And so, we've got a Board of Directors, Directors that actually will have something to direct, so we're really, really excited about that. And so, back now to you.
Okay, back to me. We're...
Do we need a motion?
Oh, we need, it's a motion. Yes, right, sorry about that. We better appoint her.
I'm sorry. It does say resolution if I look to, it wasn't in yellow.
Sorry.
So...
Harvey, I'd like to move that resolution.
So, moved, is there...
Second. And do we have any comments or questions, discussion?
Christian.
Christian.
So, this is actually the first time I've ever spoken at a Board meeting, but for good reason. I actually grew up with Sidney Sykes. We went to elementary school, middle school, high school together and then we both made the faithful decision to come to Stockton together. And I just want to say, Sidney, I'm super proud of you. You're always so much better than me. Maybe you should be up here instead of me, but, and looking at your resume, you've done so much and I can't wait to see where you go in the future. Congratulations.
Is Sidney here? Is Sidney here?
Sidney is not here.
I think she's in class.
She's in class. Ann Pomeroy's going like this, so...
Okay. Trustee Dinerger?
Yes.
Trustee Chauffer?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Dulce?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson?
Yes.
Trustee Worthington?
Yes.
Trustee Valentin?
Yes.
And Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to move on to the Academic Affairs and Planning Committee Report. We had a really good meeting this morning, lots of conversation, used up the whole hour. I learned a lot of new things, which is always nice, but I am going to call Dr. Laura Vermillion to just give us a recap and then we have some information items to share as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We had a very robust meeting today, so for your information, I have several items. For the first, I would like to call upon Dr. Teresa Bader-Lata, Dean of the School of Health Sciences, who will present the 2016 School of Health Sciences Leadership Award to Dr. Adolay Shonai-K, National Get Fit Director from the Family Resource Network.
Thank you, Provost Vermillion. Good afternoon, everyone, Chair Dinerger, President Kesselman, Board Members and Members of the Stockton Community. The School of Health Sciences Leadership Award was established in 2010 to honor individuals who make important and enduring contributions to health sciences that impact Stockton and the greater community. The nominee is recommended by a committee of faculty representing all of the programs in the School of Health Sciences. And each year, the awardee is someone who is truly a servant leader, someone who enriches the lives of others, builds better organizations, and helps create a more just and a more caring world, and this year is no exception. Dr. Adiola Shonai-K holds Master's and Doctorate Degrees in Public Health from Walden University. As the National Director of Get Fit for the Family Resource Network, she's dedicated to the creation of an inclusive culture of health for persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities. She works to develop and disseminate health promotion and disease prevention programs for individuals with disabilities and their caregivers. Get Fit, which began in New Jersey, is now across seven states and continues to grow. Adiola was a driving force in the creation of the Stockton Get Fit Chapter. And this is a collaborative and interdisciplinary exercise in nutrition program that is led by Professor Joan Perks from Nursing, Dr. Alicia Mistrangelo from PT, and Dr. Mary Kindes from OT, along with students from Nursing, Physical and Occupational Therapy, and Health Science. So, in collaboration with all of these individuals, young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities come to campus every week and they participate in education around nutrition and healthy living and exercise and you likely see them on our campus. And they also participate in our new Get Fit Trail, which was installed off Pomona Road. Adiola, in addition to leading Get Fit nationwide, also spearheads the New Jersey statewide Get Fit Coalition and she's an active member of the Trenton Health Team Community Advisory Board where she assists with the development of the Mercer County Health Improvement Plan. So, we are so very grateful to Adiola for her efforts to improve health of our at-risk citizens and it is my distinct honor to bestow this award today. We look forward to several more years of collaboration with Adiola and Get Fit. Adiola.
Congratulations. One of the things I learned about today, the Get, I'm riding over you for one second because I was so excited to learn about the Get Fit Trail. So, for the past year, I've been trying to pay attention to the steps that I take and the fact that there's one here. And also, then I learned about all of the 2020 Initiative funding, so thank you. It was because you were being honored that I got to learn about all that and you'll see me on the trail.
Thank you and congratulations. The committee unanimously voted to accept the Research and Professional Development Committee's recommendations for sabbaticals for the Fall '17 and Spring 2018 semesters. The RNPD Committee received 12 proposals for a total of 15 semesters requested for the fiscal year 2018 Sabbatical Round. Given the overall quality of the proposals, they recommended nine of the 10 for a total of 10 semesters to be funded with a number of very interesting, exciting projects. The 2015-16 External Funding Report filed by the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs was reviewed. The university garnered $6.7 million in new funds, a 16% increase in new funding from fiscal year 2015. These little books and we have some out here if you want to pick one up with pictures of the PIs, which is very nice, and some of the projects that were funded in this past year. And finally, as our Chairwoman noted, we had a robust discussion. We talked about the 2020 Initiatives and also Stockton's Interdisciplinary General Education Program. And our Chairwoman asked for information to be presented at a future Board of Trustees meeting, so we will work on that with the President's Office in the future. And thank you.
Thank you. So, Student Affairs met last week, I believe, on the 1st of December and Trustee Ellen Bailey, if you could tell us about that meeting and we have information items.
Thank you, Trustee Chair Dinerger. I'm having a hard time with my words today.
You can call her Maddie.
I am going to, in light of my inability to speak right now, I'm going to cede the floor to Vice President for Student Affairs, Tomasa Gonzalez, to give a brief overview of our meeting.
Well, we have a very exciting meeting. This past week, most of the programs in the division were discussed. Each of the Directors presented a report that is included in your records. We have one item today of information and I will call in Dr. Peterson and our Dean of Students to present our distinguished fellowship award.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Dinerger, President Kesselman, Members of the Board, Members of the University Community. Twice a year, I have the distinct pleasure and privilege of presenting to the Board and to the community the distinguished fellowship award recipients, but I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the individuals that take part in the committee selecting these individuals. So, at this time, would the individuals, the committee members, please stand and be recognized and acknowledged for selecting these students? Okay. Well, I saw, okay.
There you go. There's one.
Yes, thank you.
Stand up, please.
And now, on to a little bit about the history of the program. Since 1986, the Board of Trustees Distinguished Fellowship Program has awarded 258 awards to deserving, deserving students. And these awards go towards original research in which the students partner with faculty and the awards range anywhere from 250 to $1,000. So, for this fall, we have seven project recipients. The first one, I would ask that the students stand and if their faculty advisor is here as well, that both of them stand and continue standing until the end and that we hold the applause until the end. So, the first one is Christina Camozo. The project title was Fluid Inclusion Analysis of the Rose Blanche Quartz Gold Body. The project faculty advisor was Dr. Matthew Severs, Associate Professor for Geology. The next student is Ms. Casey Cuff. The project title is Emotions of the Holocaust: Photos from a March 2017 Study Tour. The project faculty advisor is Sarah Stout Albertson and a Program Assistant in the Sarah and Sam Chauffer Holocaust Resource Center. The next student is Gina Izari. The project title is Anti-Semitism in France. The project faculty advisor is Dr. Richard Miller, Assistant Professor of Jewish Studies and Holistic Health. Our next student is Aurora Landman. The project title is Digitizing Alliances History. The project faculty advisor is Dr. Tom Kinsella, Professor of Literature. Our next student is Mr. Donald Moat III. The project title is Bulk Rock Isotopic Analysis of Lampiro Fire Dykes and Mantle Xenolips from Westerly, Rhode Island. Yes, let's have fun with that one. The project faculty advisor is, again, Dr. Matthew Severs, Associate Professor of Geology. The next student is Trevor Tehan. The project title is Dynamic Density: Aviation Research. The project faculty advisor is Chiellen Wu, or Dr. Wu, Professor of Mathematics. And the final student is Ms. Morgan Vukisevich. The project title is Benefits of Animals to Communities at Large. The project faculty advisor is Dr. David Burley, Associate Professor of Biology. Can we give them all a round of applause, please?
Wonderful work.
Dr. Gonzalez, your orders have been obeyed.
Yeah, thank you. That concludes our report.
Can I, should I announce this? I'll announce this. As some of you may know, we have what's called a Leadership Council where we invite individuals to give presentations that sometimes so overwhelm the Leadership Council that we ask that they do it here for the entire campus community. And in this regard, we have identified one such individual. Her name is Kristy Cunningham and I hate to put this kind of pressure on her, but I thought the Board and the general public and the media, if they're here, and of course I know they're here, might get a sense of some of the outcomes that really counts when you talk about assessment. This is about what happens. These are the kinds of things that you really want to talk about. Kristy?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairperson Dinerger, President Kesselman, Board Members, colleagues, and friends of Stockton. I'm excited to be here this afternoon to share with you just a quick snapshot of some of the results from our Class of 2015 Graduate Outcomes Tracking Survey. This was a phone survey that was conducted in November of 2015. Who we surveyed was the August 2014, December 2014, and May 2015 graduates. With 709 respondents, that gave us approximately a 40% response rate, which we were quite pleased with. You will note that we did just survey undergraduates. However, beginning with the Class of 2017, we will be collecting this data for both graduates and undergraduate students. So, what does the survey entail? Well, first, you need to note that the survey design, the collection of the data, the analysis of the data, and the entire administration process met all of the standards and protocols put forth by the National Association of Colleges and Employers. Essentially, a graduate tracking survey boils down to one big question. What are you doing now that you have graduated? Have you landed somewhere? And based on the graduate's answer, we then ask a couple of follow-up questions. So, let's not beat around the bush. Let's see how we fared here at Stockton. We had 88% of the Class of 2015 graduates reporting that they were either employed or enrolled in school within six months of graduation. We were very pleased with these numbers. It was a 2% increase over the Class of 2014, which is indicative to what's happening nationally as our nation continues to recover from the recession. When we look at the full breakdown, this has been a very similar profile to what I found the last couple of years that we have collected this data in this format. Now, one of the biggest advantages of making sure that we follow all of the NACE standards is that for the first time ever, colleges now have national data in which to compare our own numbers to. So, on the next slide, I'm going to show you those numbers. However, I want to make a note before I flip to the next slide. You will notice that on the next slide, it says that 87%, not 88% of Stockton graduates have landed somewhere within six months of graduation. That is not a typo. It is a common practice to remove the small number of graduates who report that they are not engaging in any employment activities, nor do they plan to engage in any employment activities. So, they don't have a job, they don't want a job, they're not enrolled in school, and they don't want to be enrolled in school.
Sounds like early Stockton, Kristy.
So, most schools pull them out before they crunch all their data. However, I found in order to accurately compare to the national numbers, I had to roll those seven graduates back into our numbers because the national data does lump them into graduates who are still seeking. So, 87% of Stockton graduates are employed or enrolled in school within six months and 84% are the national numbers. These are numbers we should be very pleased and proud of here at Stockton. When we look at the full breakdown and how we compare nationally, we have had national data for two years now and both years, we had a similar profile. Both years, we had Stockton graduates reporting a slightly smaller percentage enrolled, excuse me, employed in full-time employment, but a slightly higher percentage in part-time employment and a slightly higher percentage reporting that they were enrolled in continuing education. The last couple of slides I have are just taking us one level deeper on a couple of points. First, we're going to look at employed graduates. We asked what the relationship of their occupation and their program and area of study is. Instead, we found that 70% of our employed graduates said, reported that what they are doing is, was related to their program or area of study. I was quite surprised by this simply because as a liberal arts institution, sometimes this number can be quite low depending on how literally the graduate interprets the question. So, 70% was quite surprising. But we also know that a question like this doesn't really accurately tell us whether our graduates are happy where they are. That 19.8% at the end is not necessarily a negative because the graduates could be very pleased with what they're doing. So, therefore, we asked the follow-up question around job satisfaction and we found that 74% of our graduates are reporting being very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with their employment. So, these are good numbers as well. One interesting note is this did take a dip, this number, over the Class of 2014. It went down by 11%, which, no need for alarm, I'm just going to keep an eye on it as we continue to collect data for the Class of 2016 to see if we see a trend happening here. Of those who are reporting being employed, 82%, just about 82%, are reporting that they are remaining in New Jersey, which I know are very good numbers for us to have when we're working and negotiating with the state. The last two slides I have are looking at students who are enrolled in further education. Of those enrolled in further education, close to 70% of them are enrolled in Master's Programs, which, again, is not a surprise. And this year, just for fun, I decided to calculate and figure out of those enrolled in school, what percent were staying here in Stockton graduate programs versus non-Stockton programs. And it broke very cleanly to a 40-60 split with 40% enrolled in Stockton graduate programs and 60% in non-Stockton programs. That brings me to the end. If you have any questions, we'd like to see these slides. They are available on the Career Center website. I'm available for questions or more information as well as Dennis Fergion in the Office of Institutional Research. So, on behalf of our Director, Walter Tarver, the entire Career Center staff, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this important data with you today and a special thank you to Dr. Kesselman for recently committing permanent funding so we can continue this important graduate tracking effort. So, thank you.
You see, when she gave, a great round of applause for Kristy. That's thrilled. When she gave the presentation at the Leadership Council at the very end of it, when, before she said we could have access to the documents, she said, "Well, it would be really nice if we had an enhanced budget." So, she, she did what she had to do. This is really, really important stuff. A lot of times, you know, the rhetoric of institutions and we all, we, you know, we have to, we're always in response, "How do your graduates do?" And we focus so much on assessment. I remember I have one, one university president, I spoke with, you know, she said, you know, "We have to measure them a little further out in liberal arts and sciences colleges and do." But this suggests tremendous success shortly after graduation. And this is, this is due to the phenomenal work by everybody out there, but you're getting students ready, they're in graduate school, they're graduating sooner, more of them are graduating, less in debt. So, the whole picture is a very bright, you know, bright light. So, kudos, Kristy. Kudos to folks in Student Affairs. Thank you.
Yeah, that was wonderful. Certainly makes every parent very pleased to think that those are the numbers associated with the graduates here. So, Finance and Professional Services Committee Report, Trustee Stan Ellis, the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We had a very good meeting, but short enough that we were able to get out in time so everybody could get ready for their photo op in front of the fireplace in the campus center. We had several items for review and action for the Board, first being the fiscal, several fiscal '17 bid waivers. They included... They included NCHREM Group, who is providing Title IX and Climate Survey Services for us. YMCA Camp Akonikin, this is the place where we have our Stockton orientation every summer. We've had it there last year as well. We did look at several other facilities, but none were able to accommodate the size and growing group that we have, which is a great, great thing to have, great problem to have. The third is Catamaran Media Company. This bid waivers for $39,000. The only reason this is on here is that the two companies that we were buying print and digital advertising for merged, and the combination of the money budget for both organizations when combined put us over our bid threshold of $33,000. So we need to bring that to the board for their review. Also, bid waiver for Whit Kiefer. This is a nationally recognized executive research firm that we have used in the past, and they have a special sports leadership division, so we're asking to use them for our search for an athletic director. And finally, under bid waivers, we have Underground Energy LLC. They are the only company I know in the country, perhaps in the world, that can provide the consulting services we need for our ATIS, ATIS, which stands for Aquafor Thermal Energy Storage System. And if you want to know more about it, Madam Chairman said she would give you a complete lesson on it. As part of the consent agenda, there were also a couple of increases in bid waivers. I'd like to review those very quickly as well. The first is for Saul Ewing. This is for additional legal services related to the Atlantic City campus project. Now, this is for work that's already been completed, and as was pointed out this morning in the meeting, this is over a two-year period. It's an increase of $60,000 over the original approved amount. The second is for Lowenstein Sandler, originally approved for $75,000. We're asking for an increase of $90,000 on that one. This is for counsel related to legal, several legal compliance issues. Again, this is part of a consent agenda, so the committee approved those and recommended to the board that they be approved as well.
Thank you so much. That was another meeting that I learned a lot about. So, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions? Right? Trustee Dyninger?
Yes.
Trustee Schafer?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Dulce?
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson?
Yes.
Trustee Worthington?
Yes, abstain on Underground Energy.
Trustee Valentin?
I abstain.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution for board consideration is for tuition fees for the 2017 summer session. The unique aspect of this is that if a student will take a course at one of our satellite campuses, they would then be eligible for flat-rate summer tuition for additional classes either at a satellite campus or here at the main campus. This has worked, I guess we've done this, so in effect, it becomes like if you take one course, you would get a two-for-one on additional courses. So, again, we reviewed this this morning, felt it was an appropriate resolution for board consideration, and are recommending its approval.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, or questions? Trustee, trustee Dyninger?
Yes.
Trustee Schafer?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Dulce?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson?
Yes.
Trustee Worthington?
Yes.
Trustee Valentin?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Thank you. The final resolution for board consideration today is actually to affirm the work done by the executive committee regarding the submission of a state budget for fiscal '18. The deadline for this submission was prior to this meeting today, so the executive committee took action on behalf of the board. And so I'm asking, we bet this morning and asked that the full board ratify the work of the executive committee. Again, this is something that we do every year, it's required by the state of New Jersey. Whether it's ever actually, I know it's been read, in fact, we were guaranteed that it read because they call us and ask us questions about it. But to our knowledge, it's never actually been acted upon, but it does actually lay out a blueprint of the type of priorities that we have here at Stockton, including looking for additional support for our staff, additional lines that the state would help compensate us for, capital improvements, et cetera. So again, the executive committee did pass this resolution, and just asking for the full board to support that action.
Harvey, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I did. This is, it's more important than we've ever anticipated in the past, because in fact, we have begun to get some calls concerning the budget submissions, and that's a good sign, because we know folks are actually reading it and going through it and comparing it. I think it's really important, we're very aggressive ask, because we are trying to recapture what we believe is an appropriate appropriation for an institution that has grown and has fulfilled the mission as the data supports, that we have done. In addition to asking for additional lines, as you well all know, that, you know, it's a broken record that I'm going to continue to ask for it, we also have asked to have our appropriation increase to recognize, not only our growth, but the fact that we are, have been designated an anchor institution for the state of New Jersey, and in fact, other anchor institutions for the state of New Jersey have received support. So we are going to continue to move forward and continue to put together and ask, I want to thank everyone in the room who contributed to this document. It is well-written, it's well-thought-out, it makes a lot of sense, it has compelling arguments. Whether they win, time will tell. As you all know, we go through a pretty substantial institutional process when it comes to this kind of thing, and I'm proud to be able to be a part of this particular budget submission, which also, our capital request was also legitimate. The reason, the reason it's important for everybody to take a look at it does articulate very clearly, delineate very clearly, the institutional priorities as it pertains to capital projects. So, between the two, the good thing is, they read it. The maybe not-so-good thing is, we can't, we can't predict what's going to happen, but you know we're going to continue to ask. So thank you, and I certainly hope the board can support this.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, and questions? Trustee Dyninger?
Yes.
Trustee Schafer?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Dulce?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson?
Yes.
Trustee Worthington?
Yes.
Trustee Valentin?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Also this morning, Vice President Administration and Finance, Charles Ingram, gave an update on SASE, Stockton Affiliated Services, Inc., and so I'd like him to come up and give that report to the assembled group.
Thank you, trustee Ellis. It's my pleasure to take my vice president hat on and put my presidential hat on. I get to say that once a year. How do I make this? There we go. So, and I say that because, as part of the annual report for SASE, it was required when it was established by this board to make an annual performance presentation on SASE and its operations. So just real quickly to remind everyone that our chairperson sits on our board of SASE. Dr. Kesselman is the chairman of our board, and I act as president. You can see the community members, part of our charter says we will always have more community members than Stockton. And we have two students from Stockton, that's also part of our charter, and we have two faculty members, and that is also part of the charter. And our mission is clearly and simply is, we are a self-supporting entity, which is to increase, expand, and improve service levels for Stockton University. That's it. These are just some of the bubbles of things that we do. I think a lot of people may not recall that we do graduate housing. Everyone knows we do the transportation, food, and bookstores, but we also do vending. We manage the Dante Hall lease, Sea View operations, and then the Aziz and Woodbine sites. And in fact, I'm just going to highlight a few things. The Sam Aziz Museum and Ann Aziz Hall update. 636 students and 51 educators have gone through that facility. And also, you can see some of the other things. I think, one of the things the president pointed out is that Mr. Aziz, who is on our board, actually donated money, because you probably have heard in the press that Woodbine is, school district is having some financial challenges. He's actually given scholarships to teachers to go get certificates that they can't get from their school teachers, from their school district, so that's a really positive contribution from Michael Aziz. Last year, I reported to you that we did some student surveys, and from those surveys, we have revamped the food options at Lakeside Lodge. It's become more organic, more natural-based. It has like, the thing that interests me is it has like a Chipotle-type Mexican food bar, but you can see that we've responded, we use more local farm-fresh ingredients, and we're trying to meet the needs of our students as we discover them. Speaking of vending, we have a new vending, vending awarded this year. They've modernized the equipment, and they've actually revised some of the snack options. A few are a little more healthy than some of the traditional ones, but this is the 2:00 AM food run versus the other folks, so. Parking, this, I'm going to take a minute. Stockton University did a very first thing in its history, and that was, we registered every single person on this campus that drives to this campus is registered. And I don't know if Mike is here or not, Harvey accuses it to being just a phantom name, but he brought some expertise and skill set that with careful planning by multiple departments across this campus and help. We were able to do that pretty seamlessly, and the important thing for doing that is that we now have data. We have data now that we can use going forward to manage pinch points. It also is used for safety. We know who's driving to campus, we register the visitors, and we've done that all seamlessly. So I want to thank all of you for your support. One of the things you did is you communicated back when we built parking lot eight, as we discussed in the Building and Grounds Committee this morning, it increased the traffic up Louisville Road, is that right? And then into lot seven, where a lot of people walk. Well, when it was residential parking, there wasn't a lot of walking and traffic. Now that it's commuter parking, and the feedback we got from the faculty actually was very helpful. We have now striped, so our plant folks jumped on that, came up with a plan through the parking committee. So this is really working. This is a great example of shared governance and collaboration, working together to provide a good solution and a safe solution for all of our stakeholders here. We bought a couple of buses and updated our transport in anticipation of Atlantic City, which, you know, I'd like to say we knew we were going to have parking lot eight, but we didn't, but it really paid off having these extra shuttles. The GPS is now working, and it's just really been quite helpful. Sea View, I learned from the president this year, since I wasn't here when this happened, but in the master plan, there was a live-in learning conference center housing facility on the master plan on Pomona Road, and instead, the strategic decision was to buy Sea View at that time. So, we got a couple awards this year, you all know about that. The one thing that I get the most compliments on is we brought back the Seafood Thursday buffet. I guess I should point out the bottom bullet, that's pretty important, unrestricted net income back to the university of $1.3 million. Also, it houses 418 students it last fiscal year, and we actually had six classes there, 76 Stockton events, and some interns, and 515 of us took advantage of a discounted rate and stayed there this year, so. SASE also purchased the lot right behind the Pines course and then gifted it back to the university. And then the big budget number is, you can see what we did in fiscal year '16, $3 million. And since I'm now a president, and I learned from the president of the university to embellish, we have nearly given $20 million to, I'm sorry, no, 14, almost $15 million since SASE was inception to date and established. And this is new revenue. This isn't student fee money coming back, this is revenue coming back that we wouldn't have. So, that concludes my presentation.
Nice job, Charles. Nice job.